I'd like to welcome everybody to regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Roll call, please.
Chair Isabella.
Yes.
Vice President Jagiello.
Yes.
Commissioners Merk.
Here.
Colsey.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Commissioner Jagiello, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Public Communications, part of our agenda. Public communications is the time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Does anybody have anything they would like to speak on other than what is agendized? I'm going to take that as a no and move on to our consent items, which are -- our one consent item is approving the minutes of the regular meeting of Planning Commission, October 5th, 2016.
Will we approve the minutes?
Second.
Roll call.
Merk.
Yes.
Colsey.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to move on to disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Commissioner Merk.
I've ridden my bike past 1104 Foothill numerous times, but never really looked over the fence that much, so I've not had any ex parte contacts.
I've been to 1104 Foothill and looked over the fence and had no ex parte contacts.
I've been to the site and had no ex parte contacts.
I've looked at the site from the road, but had no ex parte contact.
I visited the site when it was previously listed and had no ex parte contacts and also visited and looked over the fence again today to refresh my memory.
I too have viewed the property from the street and quite a few years ago was actually on the property, and I had no ex parte contacts with the new owners.
I stopped by 1104 Foothill this evening, and the owner happened to be getting out of the car, and I did get a tour of the inside of the house. No questions were asked of me or vice versa, but I got a lay of the land.
Whoops. Okay, we'll move on to our first public hearing item, which is Design Review Permit, DRP 16-01, for modification to Design Review Permit, DRP 13-09, approved by the Planning Commission on September 4th, 2013, for construction of a second-story addition and residence remodeled to a single-family residence located at 601 Crestview Drive, Assessor's Parcel Number 0230081400. The modifications requested include architectural design, roofline change, color change, and other miscellaneous changes. In addition, the applicant is requesting approval to a detached, covered, outdoor barbecue structure at the rear of the house. The general plan designation for the property is medium-density residential, three to four dwellings per acre. The zoning classification of the property is single-family residential R1. Categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to SEQA. Property Owner: Ernest Reedy. Architect: Mark Shalnut. Architect Representative: Craig Young. This is continued from our September 21st meeting. And I see the recommendation is to continue, but still like to hear from staff, please.
We really have nothing more to add, other than there on the back of your staff report, brief staff report, is the applicant's request to have a continuation. Again, this is just a matter of them getting the materials ready for us to -- in time for us to review them and then move it forward.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Hang on, I just want to just -- I'm going to open up the public hearing. This is a public hearing. If anybody has any comments, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner Jagiello.
I'll make a motion to continue this item to the November 2nd regular meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Merk.
Yes.
Colsey.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next public hearing item, Design Review Permit, DRP 16-06, for additional floor area to an existing two-level, single-family home at 1104 Foothill Road, Assessor's Parcel Number 0200030010. The general plan land use designation of the site is Low Density Residential, LR, and zoning classification is Single Family Residential, Low Density, RO1. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to SEQA. Property Owner: Tracy Albert. And Carum Apple Perlman. Applicant Representative: Matias Prasolo. For Kevin Clark, Inc. Would like to hear from staff, please.
Thank you. So before you tonight is a project that's on a 1.17-acre lot with an existing 2,659 square foot, two-story, single-family residence, a two-car detached garage, a secondary residential unit, and accessory building. I think this is a fairly routine project going before you tonight with a few exceptions, and I'll just point those out, that as we notice we always do, the design review is required because it's a two-story, that is, and over 24 feet in height, that we have given you the standard in the resolution and the staff report, the standard design elements that you need to look at. We did ask the applicant, and they did provide for us an extended Phase One, as far as the historic -- I mean, excuse me, not an extended, a Phase One historic report, as far as the historic nature of the building, and what -- and to characterize what -- if what they're doing is consistent with the design of the existing house, and not jeopardize any of the character-defining elements of what could possibly be a historic piece of property for Ojai. And I think in the staff report, you'll just note that it was not considered a building that could be found on the National Register, but that it did have some -- it did meet some criteria as far as what might be -- what we have in our local codes and might be subject to getting landmarked. So basically, reading the report, it comes down to that it may be eligible for the City of Ojai's designation based on criteria C and E. And C is, I think, and here is, a good representative example of the two-level revival style. The property embodies the distinguishing characteristics of an architectural style valuable for the study of the period, type, method of construction, or use of indigenous materials. That's criterion C. And that is elements of design detailing materials, a craftsman, that render it architecturally significant, and that's criterion E. So we just are making sure we're not asking this person to landmark. There isn't an issue with any of that. We just make sure that what they're doing doesn't, you know, impact a character-defining element, and it has been determined that what they're doing is consistent with the style and the year of this house. With that, we just offer to you the same analysis as far as solar access and, you know, the issues with the tree and public art. We will point out that the applicant did indicate they weren't impacting any trees. However, the historic report shows that there is a large oak tree branch overhanging a small portion of the existing brick patio. Therefore, we placed a condition on them. As you know, if you're affecting five, I think it's the benchmark or the cut is at five trees. Staff is able to do one tree. We like to bring them in as a comprehensive, but we didn't think it was worth delaying the applicant on this project to have them submit the tree report. We'll take a look at that and make sure that we have it before we issue, because it's standard, it's fairly routine in this particular case. We don't think the applicant's going to ask for it to be removed or need to have it be removed, but we will have them value the tree and do the standard mitigations, you know, so that there's a record of what the health of the tree was before they did any work. And finally, I think there's the -- the other thing of note is that you will be, if you choose so to adopt the resolution tonight approving this project, it will be going over the standard height limit, and as stated in the staff report, you do have the authority to do that if you make the finding that, you know, it's in keeping with or necessary for it to have its style that it needs, you know, consistent with what's existing. And so we do think that that's been substantiated by the applicant, that this increase of the height is necessary from, I think, 25 feet to 28, in a small portion of it to have the ridge line and the roof line be consistent. So we think that that's documented fairly well. And I will just point out that the other thing, if you turn to the historic report, there's some pictures in there that will -- if I can find the page that's on, that will show you the other condition we've placed on this project that's a little bit unusual and we wanted to point out to you, and now I can't find it. So normally, we would ask for a Phase One, so this particular property had a paw done and then a Phase One recommended from the paw, and a Phase One with STPs recommended by the tribe. We put a condition on for them to do that prior to construction, and that basically is because the entire area proposed for development is fully improved. So a Phase One, as you know, is a walking pedestrian, look see at the property, and extended is a shovel test pits that that would go into the dirt and take some tests out. They can't do that without disturbing, you know, the existing patio and the whole area there. So, little unusual, we're asking, and we have talked to the tribe, and they concur with us with our, you know, we did let them know how we were going to go, and they had no objections. So we're going to ask for that to be done once they're in the phase where they're -- before they actually start construction, but they're already in the phase of wanting to move right into demoing. That way, we don't have a lag of three, four, five, six months where somebody has, you know, their backyard all disrupted. And the condition, if you look at the condition that we've put on here, which would be -- oh, I should also say that you have a new resolution in front of you tonight, sorry, kind of moving backwards here. So we -- it's on page three of eight on the one that was placed before you tonight, and it just says, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit for the project, the applicant shall conduct an extended Phase One of the area proposed to be disturbed by the new structure and its foundation. Footings were pad. The scope of the work for the extended Phase One shall include a record search and a minimum of three shovel test pits at the depth of a minimum of 12 inches below the proposed deepest elevation, the proposed foundation, or trenching for the project. The results of the STPs shovel test pits shall be photographed, reported to you, and approved by the city, and shall include the extent of the site in terms of both horizontal boundaries and depth, soil types, and strata -- well, somebody else needs to say that. What? Integrity of the deposits, including and the presence, absence of subsurface features, any artifacts and ecofacts recovered, and any other material findings, and description of work completed, as it is customary in the industry." Now, should something happen from the study, because we're sort of doing it a little bit out of order here, we have included this second portion of the condition that says if, based on this exploratory work, the, in the opinion of, it would be the archaeologist conducting the work, that there needs to be onsite monitoring, then the following will take place, which is the condition about monitoring. Again, we don't want to just place monitoring on every project. It's very expensive and cumbersome for everyone to have monitoring unless we can substantiate there's a valid reason. So this way, it's kind of a two-part and a little awkward, but I think it gives both staff and the applicant and the archaeologists some flexibility on meeting the general plan and the city's intent in protecting cultural resources, but making it so that it's the timing as such doesn't inconvenience the applicant. It still will be, everything, all the bases will be covered, it's just a little unusual in the timing. And then on the resolution before you tonight, we did remove one of the conditions they had for undergrounding utilities, because as we've pointed this out before, it's for new structures. This isn't a new structure. This is a remodel of an existing structure, so it doesn't pertain, so we removed it. And I think, and I think there was a typo corrected, and I think that's all the changes in the resolution, so we just wanted to walk you through those. And I think that's it. I think other, open to any questions you may have.
I have a question on condition number two. About the status of the second dwelling unit.
Condition number two, the project approval.
So the way I read it, that...
Constitutes the city's authorization to remodel a single-family residence?
Yeah, where it says no additional dwelling units are allowed in the project or on the property. So when I read the report...
Yeah, so I guess we need to say that beyond those already approved, is that what we're going to say?
Yeah.
Beyond those existing.
Those existing.
Because they could have been done before there was any approval.
Right, so it is true. The historic report, if you read it, says that that second unit was there, I believe, in 1938, which would predate our zoning. So that's correct. That seems reasonable to word it that way to me.
Okay, yeah, because then the distinction about the guest house remaining, just a nothing, is in here as well, so I think that distinction is made.
I'm sorry, the what?
The, well, there's two accessory structures.
One is non-habitable.
One is non-habitable, and that condition was, that condition's in here. So I just wanted to make sure we were understanding that we're talking about one structure remains a second dwelling, if that's what we're intending, and the other does not.
Correct.
Okay. So I just, yeah, I just...
So how would you like that, or, well, I guess we, when you, some like some motion, we can talk about wording, but I think it does need to be cleaned up. I think also, it needs to be cleaned up regarding the, it says, "The applicant shall declare, and such declarations shall be recorded against the property, that residence and improvements thereon will not be used or permitted," and it may just need to say that resident and existing second unit and other improvements shall not be used or permitted to be used as additional residential units. I mean, it just needs cleaned up a little bit.
Right. We'll figure it out when we get there.
Okay.
That's all I have. Commissioner Colsey?
Thank you. A couple of things. In the staff report, page three of five, second paragraph of discussion under design review, it calls out 10-2.2004, actually. But it talks about "character with regard to preservation of views and retention of natural landforms." And I looked up 10-2.2004B2D, and that talks about providing view corridors which are oriented toward parks, open spaces, and natural features. Is this providing view corridors for people on the parcel that we're talking about or for people in other parcels? Because we've had people here arguing about, "Nobody can build to the north of my property because it keeps me from looking at the mountains." And I'm not sure what this part of the code means. Now, in this case, the houses are far enough apart that I don't think we have any problem, but as a general rule, I don't understand what the requirement is for preserving view corridors.
Well, I can, I need to look it up, because I don't have...
Okay.
I don't have that in my head verbatim, what you're saying there. Generally speaking, view corridors are which, you know, without looking it up, I'm going to tell you, generally speaking, view corridors are exactly what you said. They're, you know, that's the reason that you have, you know, a certain height, a certain setback to have those, where you're looking out, you're looking through the public into the mountains, or something like that.
Yeah, my question really is, is it, is it the property owner's view corridor, or is it the neighbor's view corridor that must be preserved?
Well, it would be, it could be any of that, because if, you know, setbacks and the orientation, I mean, the height limits and all those things are all a factor in providing some view corridor from one to the next to public views. You know, for instance, to the mountains, or if you're by the ocean, or anything like that, any of that nature. You are not allowed to build like this. You know, that's why you have front yard, side yard setbacks, and you have a height limitation. Whether you get this look, you know, or you get that look, it all, there is a certain view corridor that is developed by having setbacks and height requirements in any city. But it is, so that's why you're not allowed to bulk out your entire lot. I mean, that's obvious. But I'm not protecting necessarily your view of me and your view of, so the placement of the home usually provides some view, but not your particular view, if that makes sense.
Okay, so the assumption is that if the property meets the setback and height requirements, then one can assume that we have preserved whatever views it's necessary to preserve?
You, one would assume that you've preserved whatever minimal view corridors, light, et cetera, et cetera, whatever is necessary for that property behind it. If you want to have a view of the topo-topas, it would be, or something that's unique to that city, it would be assumed that you're protecting those from the public right-of-ways. So you're either, you know, when you're driving down the street, or, I mean, it's the same thing, you know, you go to the beach, you can see the ocean, you know, there's some corridor, in this particular case, you may have to go to a park, or you may have to go up a trail.
You can get a peek from somewhere.
You can go to some public space and see them. But your private view isn't what you think it is. It is a corridor, it's a window, it's a wedge, it's over the top, it's this, you can still go in front of somebody.
Something provided, so long as everybody else goes by the rules.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So if that makes sense?
Yeah.
And I'm happy to look this up further if you want.
I have just one more question at the moment, and that is with regard to condition 28 in the revised...
Okay.
Talks about spark arresters. I went looking for discussion of spark arresters, and I'm not, I'm not questioning that it's a good thing to put a spark arrester on a chimney.
Right.
But I couldn't find where it was called out in the code. And in general, if we could make a pass through, I mean, a lot of these are kind of standard conditions that are laid on every project that comes before us.
Correct.
If we had a municipal code citation at the end of each one, that would make it extremely clear for any applicant exactly what the rules are. Right now, you kind of have to search through the code to find, why am I having to do this?
Well, I would say too, though, obviously, these are standard fire department conditions, so you may not find them in our municipal code.
Right.
Because we haven't adopted all of the fire, you know, department criteria that they would like us to adopt. But they are pretty standard, they're minimums. I mean, if you felt that you really didn't want the spark arrester on there, I'm assuming you probably could take it off, but it is recommended.
I wasn't suggesting that.
Right. So I wouldn't think that there's a direct correlation between necessarily those and our municipal code. It could be in the building code and...
In the state building code, you mean, Title 24.
But they're putting, you know, they're, these are things that they think are necessary. Obviously, the 126 form is a requirement of the fire, county fire. And, and again, like this, the division of the fire department standards for fire flow, fire protection, sprinklers, and vehicular access. We have not adopted some of the requirements that they want, or we haven't in the past. And then, you know, the numbers, that again gets back to what it takes for them to see so that they're addressing, you know, you call, they know who you are and where you are. I mean, those are kind of standard things. I don't think, but I'd be happy to see whether, and research tomorrow, whether that spark arrester is code and put it in there if it is.
Yeah, that's just a simple example of...
It could be, right.
Making it clear to an applicant what the requirements are.
No, I agree. I mean, obviously, we try to do that. What we try to do is, you know, put standard conditions in the standard section, the ones that are specific to the project in another section. We'd be happy to then refine those with the code sections. I had that in other cities where I've worked, and that's really, it's really clear. It helps the Planning Commission to know which those of those they can remove, and which one are just stated in there as fact statements, which, you know, regardless of whether they're on the project or not, you're going to have to comply with. So I'm fine doing that.
Yeah. There's that other reference, by the way.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Great, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, if not, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'd like to hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening. My name is Matias Prasolo, and I'm the applicant for 1104 Foothill Road.
Did you want to give us a summary of your project, or did you just like us to just open it up to questions?
Well, brief description of the project would be, this addition is, it's a, the project consists of a two-story addition to the main residence. In the east side of the residence, which is the rear, and currently, there's a brick terrace patio, partially covered. The addition would have a great room in the lower level and master bath and closet. And on the second level, on the upper level, would have a secondary bedroom.
Can you tell us a little bit about the architectural element that exceeds our height restriction?
Sure. As described on the staff report, is the upper portion of a steep roof ridge, that it's a, it's a, I believe it's an 18 and 12 pitch roof, and it's as a result of preserving the architectural style and character of the building.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
There was a, there was a mention of only one secondary habitable dwelling being allowed, I guess it was. When I peeked over your fence today from Vista Hermosa, I saw both of the rearmost buildings on the property. The rearmost building looked quite habitable. The one that was right up against the fence, frankly, looked like it could have been habitable. There were curtains in the window and that kind of thing. Is it, is that the one that is not habitable? The one that's right up against the fence? Or is it the one that's against the back fence?
The one right next to the fence of Vista Hermosa is the second residential unit. The one closer to the rear of the property, that is inhabitable, and it's not conditioned.
Oh, okay. I would have guessed the other way around. Okay. What's the plan for that rearmost building?
It's an office and an art studio.
Can you come to the mark, please, mic, please?
Okay.
I'm a musician, so I'm going to be writing music in there, and my husband is a photographer, so he's going to be editing photos in there. So that's, it's really just a working studio.
Thank you.
It doesn't have a kitchen or...
It has no plumbing. It has no, it has no water.
Plumbing at all, so it's...
It just has electrical.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, well, oh, sorry, Commissioner Powers?
It's a question and a suggestion. I'm wondering if you're taking in account for the new bathroom and any gray water considerations? You know, as of now, the city doesn't have a wise water ordinance at all.
I can address that.
Okay.
So we are, so, you know, one of the, one of the things that we're very concerned about, obviously, is water. While we appreciate and are looking forward to getting this approved, I think one of the things I indicated to you, Ray, today was that we are probably going to hold this project up, potentially, with respect to water, as a concern with respect to what's kind of going on in our overall community. That said, we have got a washer and dryer that is in our garage that we are actually going to put a cistern in and convert to gray water. So our concern is about how to preserve what we've got, so anything that we can do to conserve, we are going to do, and that will be part of, obviously, our plan going forward.
So in regards specifically to the new bathroom?
Yes, it will be gray. It will be a gray water system. That would be the plan.
And any plan for rainwater harvesting off the roof if we get rain?
You know, I think, Ray, what we're going to do is we're going to evaluate everything that we've got on the property. I mean, we want to be as green as possible. We want to preserve what we have, so we're evaluating everything, and we'll do whatever is necessary to preserve and conserve our water.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, this is a public hearing. If anybody else would like to speak on the matter, I think everybody's home watching the debate, so...
The don'ters.
Mr. Prasolo, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. Anything else from you guys? No? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and we can discuss amongst ourselves. Does anybody else have anything they would like to chat about with regard to this project? If not, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt PC, am I on the right one? Yes.
With the modification in the, in the new condition, but with some clarification on the wording on condition number two. Do you want to take over, Chester?
Yeah, I didn't-
So, so the way that the condition reads right now, the project approval constitutes the city's authorization to remodel a single-family residence. No additional dwelling units are allowed in the project or on the property. So they already have
No new. So we want to say no new.
No.
That's what we want to say.
Right. We want to say, right. Well, we want to-
Substitute new for additional and not worry about the rest of the wording.
No dwelling units. Well, yeah, I mean, that seems like it would capture it. Okay.
So exactly, exactly where would that be?
Right here. No, no new dwelling units.
No new additional dwellings.
No new dwelling, no new dwelling units are allowed. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, just add new between no and additional.
Okay.
Take out the word additional.
Take out the word additional.
Yeah, just no new.
No new dwelling.
Okay. Does that work for you, Director Wald?
Yeah, you know, this is a standard condition we've been using, but, you know, obviously, excuse me, I will say that it's an, that's an odd wording because, you know, we're seeing more and more that more changes coming down from the state regarding second units, more permissive rules and regulations. I mean, I don't know if you put that in there, how that would prohibit them if the city were to change their rules and regulations and allow, I mean, obviously, another unit or a guest house. Because right now, it's one or the other. So maybe it needs to say no new additional dwelling units are allowed on the project without, you know,
Prejudice or something?
Without, you know, City of Ojai review and approval.
Or if we just took the whole sentence out, they still have to abide by the code as it stands.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that might be, I just hate to put something on there that it's like a lost leader in there, and then somebody comes in to do something, and I got to take a whole nother project through.
Especially where we're going to be revamping the second dwelling ordinance, and who knows where that's going to go.
Well, we, yeah, and we just, the state just did new rules and regulations we're going to comply with. So I just want to make sure we're not doing something that, putting a condition that voids the whole condition.
I like the idea of just removing the whole line.
Excellent. Okay.
Modify your motion to do that, then?
Yes.
Great.
The same, you know, so I want to, the resolution is to adapt the, to adopt the PC Resolution Permit DRP 16-06, subject to the findings on the new submitted conditions of approval, omitting on page two of, three of eight, the sentence, "No additional dwellings, units are allowed in the project or on the property."
Can I get a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Quillisi?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Jagiella?
Yes.
Cibella?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Maybe we can do that six-story structure?
Yes, of course.
But only at the very back of the lot.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, we are now going to move on to our number four item, which is an ordinance TA 16-01, revising Article 12 entitled landscaping standards of Chapter Two of Title 10 of the Ojai Municipal Code to establish revised standards in compliance with the State of California Modified Water Efficiency Landscaping Ordinance. Muelo. The proposed ordinance is exempt from California from CEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3 of CEQA Guidelines as the changes do not have the potential to cause a significant effect on the environment. The applicant is the City of Ojai. I'd like to hear from staff.
Thank you. So last year, around this time, sorry, November 2015, we adopted in the state's model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance as modified in 2015 by order of law. City Council didn't, I don't believe it came through, did it? I think it just went straight to City Council. Of course, the, the new Modified Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance was adopted in July, became effective in January 1st. And so we had a time crunch to get it adopted, as many things were rolling through the state that way. We wanted to bring it back around and codify it into the code that helps for clarity for the public. You know, when they click on the municipal code as it's codified and hosted on our website, they're still getting the old one up, and we had, and Sherry and I and staff have to constantly remind people, you know, that we did adopt the state model. Of course, the state would override it anyway. But it just, it really is very awkward and not very user-friendly. And as you know, in your joint meeting that we had just a short while ago, council did direct staff that we could bring it back and get adopted without additional modifications to it because it is kind of imperative that we get it up there sooner than later. And so before you tonight is the model, the state's model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, folded into our, the one previously adopted a couple of years ago, the original Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. And the, and the whole package here is really just an attempt to try to give you some type of roadmap as to what changed, how it changed, how it affects people, the kind of documentation that we're now working with. So we have the guidelines and kind of a toolbox and a lot of handouts that staff's all developed. These, most of these are straight out of the websites either, you know, the building officials' website, they had some, the Water Efficient, Department of Water Resources had some. So we're just trying to put them together in a, in a format that will help people as they go through. This is a rather onerous ordinance, and it's been, we've worked on a couple, as you know, Commissioner Nolan, and it's, it's a little intense getting through it. So we wanted to just give you an idea of, and work through. We think the handouts are good. We think the ordinance is good. We think it's doing its job. Staff and I think council agreed with us and gave us direction just to adopt it as is. Feels that it's sitting fairly well in providing some water-wise rules and regulations for Ojai. I don't want to go through it because I think it's just really, it's a lot of regulation. But I will say this, that the planning commission has been tasked with coming up with a water-wise ordinance. Some things, even the council's directed us to do that. And if, for staff to work with you to do it. And if that's something, if there's something in addition to this, you know, that can go through that work program. You know, an ordinance change doesn't have to be just one section of the ordinance. You know, if you're working on a lot of different things in the water-wise, when you move on to that and you see there's something more you want to put in there, you can, you can work and present that to council, and we can put that as part of the overall water-wise stuff. So I would just really ask that we move this forward to council so that we can help the public really master this, this new, these new regulations and with the guidelines and the ordinance placed in an appropriate place in our, in our municipal code.
Can you, one question I had on the significant revisions, section, page two of four of the staff report. Okay, so, so on the one hand, it says the ordinance is, the size of the landscape subject to the ordinance has been lowered from 2,500 to 500. And then on the top of the second page, "The size threshold for existing landscapes that are being rehabilitated remains at 2,500. Only rehabilitated landscapes are subject to the ordinance." So I thought that it was sort of saying, okay. I thought it was saying new, this applied to new, that it was lowered to 500 to 2,500. But then it says only rehabilitated landscapes are subject to the ordinance.
No, it's saying, I think it's saying only rehabilited landscapes that are associated with building or a landscape permit or plan check or design review. In other words, I think what it's trying to establish is that if you went out and you were doing something that didn't require review from the city in some way, shape, or form, we don't have a bite at the apple. You have to come in through some vehicle to us, whether it's a building permit, a landscape permit, that type of thing. I think that's all it's trying to say.
But does a landscape permit kick in at 500 square foot project?
So for instance, in Ojai, and Sherry can, you know, you know, the whole time I've been here, you know, we've never required a landscape plan from the single-family homes that don't come in for design review. I don't know why, but we don't. And it was kind of, Sherry would have to remind me, like, every single day, you know, I would be, I'm like, "Well, don't they have a landscape plan?" No, we don't do them. So if we're not reviewing them, then they're not going to be subject to. That'd be something that you would want to consider when you're doing your water-wise ordinance. Is, why are we carving out so many exceptions that then people are out doing things that aren't water-wise?
Okay, great. Thank you. That's helpful. Commissioner Quillisi?
I think we can, I think we can at least partially solve the problem insofar as making it compatible with the text amendment here by just adding, if you feel a need to do something with the staff report, in that paragraph at the end of page two of four, you could just say the size of new landscapes subject to the ordinance has been reduced from 2,500 to 500. And that's exactly what 10-21202B1 says in the text amendment.
But, but-
If, if you, if you want to make an amendment to the staff report, I don't think there's a need for it. But it does, it does cause some confusion without the word new in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think sometimes when we were writing, you know, Catherine, I think we were trying very hard to get this done, and she's worked on it, and I think I read it the same way, and somebody else just reads it different. It's always very interesting, but I see the problem.
I don't even think it was staff, staff's issue because I can remember when I was chairing the committee to do this, we read through that, and this was on the 2010 version.
Right.
And we kept saying, are, do they mean this or do they mean that? We, I mean, we literally had the debate. So I think it's actually in the ordinance. I don't think it was anything that staff did. There was one other thing that I saw, or just a couple of comments. And it has, this has to do with, and I know it comes up in a couple of places, but let me find it. I just had it a minute ago, and now I lost it. Okay, well, for instance, it's on page three of 400 Landscape Design Plan. And it says, "Prior to planting, four yards of compost must be incorporated per 1,000 square feet of permeable area." I wanted to point out that in the actual ordinance, it does state that, but then it does state if there's less than 6% organic matter in the existing soil, which of course would be determined through the soil report.
Right.
I don't know if you're going to find that in Ojai, but it is in the ordinance, so it's probably-
Where do you want to add it at? Could you give me the page where you are?
Yeah, it's, it actually occurs in more than one page, and all right, so that was on page three of four.
That's in the staff report.
That's in the staff report.
Oh, we don't need to correct it in the staff report if you guys are, I'll understand that.
But let me find it on the ordinance.
I want to make sure it's correct in the ordinance. Because I think there's some paraphrasing that's being done in the staff report to just bring out the changes.
Once again, on the, on the Department of Water Resources, they have a list of the changes, and they have it the same way, but if you open up the ordinance, that other clause is in there.
Well, that would explain it because we're, we're not recreating the wheel. We're going to the source and drafting the changes.
I know I wrote it down.
It's at the top of page nine of 15.
Yes, there you go.
Okay.
I just found where I had my note. Thank you. And so I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, I really want to thank staff for doing an excellent, excellent job with this report. And also, having this toolkit is a really, it's going to be good for the applicant. It's going to be good for the designer. It's going to be good for staff. And I know I've said this over and over since 2010, but I'm really excited about it. And I'm also really happy to see that our guidelines that we produced are actually included in here. And I think that's going to help everyone also. And Kathleen, this was something you and I had talked about months ago, and about putting an extra, I mean, this is just more of a-
Oh, check boxes.
Check box, yeah.
No, no, I'm fine if you have suggestions. Like I said, we're, we're finding that this particular ordinance, albeit state mandated, is just completely, it's very time-consuming to comply with. And anything we can do to help people. And the very first person that used this ordinance that I'm aware of here in the city, he just expressed to me today, he said, you know, had he known that making the smallest changes resulted in such revisions and such expensive revisions.
Right.
And so we want to make sure that people are really understanding how limiting this ordinance is, and so they don't get themselves into that type of situation where they've made infield corrections, infield changes to the tune of a couple of thousand dollars and coming back and redoing paperwork.
Right.
So anything we can provide that helps them, I think it's really beneficial because honestly, even for staff, all of us, we're just like, wow. I mean, this is just such a change in the direction of how we've been going.
Right. So I think they're having, and you, actually, you and I had discussed this a couple of months ago, about putting that double checkbox.
Okay.
Because then the designer can actually fill it out and check it off.
So just add another row.
And then they could bring it in, and staff, when you're doing your-
Column of checkboxes.
Exactly. When you're doing your plan check, then you can see that what they checked off, but you can go through it too and go, oh, check.
No, I think it's really great, and you know, you know, we normally wouldn't put all this stuff in because it's kind of a little bit over, it's kind of all-consuming for you guys to look at it. But I really wanted some suggestions back, and I wanted it to really flow like the city's got a whole package, and we wanted the, the city's emblem on all of this. So, you know, I mean, it's such a large package. If you set one page down, you're going to know it belongs in here. And, and that, you know, it's worse than doing taxes, I believe, this.
Well, you know what, and here's just a couple of other comments about it. As onerous as this sounds, there's a lot of things that are in here that a designer would do, was doing anyway on project. The soil management report, basically, all that information about what goes on a plan, that was all normal procedure. And despite the fact that it does sound so onerous, you can actually be really creative and have a beautiful, functioning landscape. It's just a matter of knowing the right irrigation equipment and the plant factors. And it does take a little more time to play around with it because you're only allowed a certain amount of water. But I think the efficiency is really going to help because over 50% of the water on, at least in a residential project, goes to landscape. And this actually, I mean, you have to cut back. You just have to be creative with what you're doing. And we are in a Mediterranean climate, and there's so many plants that can be used. I'm just kind of saying that in general for the public.
Yes, I understand. But I will say, though, that we do really need to have a very comprehensive package so that people understand. This isn't ju, this, this particular ordinance isn't just about checking the boxes to get an approval.
No.
There's boxes, there's boxes checked and reviewed when you get it installed. There's auditing that you've done it right, and then we report to the state. So this isn't a ma, this isn't one of those things where you can say you did it right and do something else on the ground. That's all I'm concerned about because we had that the first time. And, and it was very minor changes that impacted a lot of staff time, a lot of applicants. We just want to make sure that, that it, that it's flowing well and that people are really understanding. Because when you want to open your business, or you want to get a final or a certificate of occupancy, and you have to comply with this, this is going to be the holding, this is going to be the document that holds you up if you're not, if it's not done right.
And I commend you and the rest of staff for putting this together as a nice package to give someone because everything is there. In the past, what you'd have to do is you'd go onto all, you know, different websites, and you'd be like sorting it out, and where do I get this from? Now, it's all in one package. And by the way, I want to just say that I did talk months ago to some of my commercial clients. And, you know, they were always going, "Oh, we never know what to do, then we got to do this." And not just this, but all requirements for a submittal. And then I said to them, I go, "If somebody handed you a notebook, and even if it was this big, with everything that you had to do, and you had checklists, would you rather have that or not know what to do and be searching on your own?" And they all said, "Oh, no, we'll take the lists." So even though that looks like, you know, there's a lot of paper there, and personally, as a
Okay, good.
designer and sitting here as a planning commissioner, I see the value. And that's why we spent so much time creating those checklists for that very reason. So, and then, of course, staff updated those to meet the new 2015 requirement.
I don't think there was much. There were some, but it wasn't, I mean, the good, it was, the substance of the original guidelines was very valid.
And then one other thing I will say too, and this was something while the Muelo Committee was active, there, our Article 12 is still, needs some work on it. And I know we're not doing that tonight. I just wanted to make the comment that at some point, it needs to get updated. I went through and made a couple of notes.
That is what we're doing tonight. This is, this is all going to go into the city, it's going to be codified. This is, this is all going to go into the city, it's going to be codified into the city's municipal code.
So the, the new Mwellow part, I'm fine with, I think it's our old Article 12, still has some items in it that are, I don't know if they're outdated, or they just don't necessarily match, and I would be happy to take out where I marked some things, I don't know if we want to go through it now, or is that too laborious?
I think probably what you need to do is send those to me, and then I'll-
I'll send it to you.
I'll present those to the planning commission, we do the water-wise stuff, if there's things that need to be changed in there.
Right.
Because, you know, this is actually, the Article 12 that you guys worked on in 2012 or 2013 or whatever, this is changing that Article 12, this, this is going to get, this is going to replace it with those changes.
So what I want to be clear, what we did in 2010, was, we went through the whole new Mwellow.
Right, no, the Wello.
Wello.
This is the Mwell, oh, you, oh, you're saying you went through this?
Yeah, so what we did was, yeah, we went through the whole thing, we did the, the checklist or the guidelines, but what we made note of was, we never got to change or coordinate that with our Article 12 standards. We never did that, so, and like-
It should, it should have been, it was adopted as part of Article 12.
Yeah, I know, I bet I, it is, I know that it's part of it, but there's some inconsistencies, and for instance, like I just printed, took out this one page, these, there's a couple things in here from 2010 that we actually added that no longer need to be in, in here, because it's, they've been superseded by 2015, and I don't, like I said, I don't know-
So, I'm, I'm just a little confused, and maybe it's just too much detail for the conversation, but could we look at the ordinance, the resol, adopting resolution and the resolution, I mean, I, I understand the guideline, the toolbox and all that, that's really great, but-
Right.
But we're going to pass, we're going to pass this resolution, that's where it's before you tonight, that's proposal.
Go back to it.
And the way that this works is, if you look at the resolution that you're forwarding on to City Council, page one is our whereas's, and now therefore, page two starts out, Article 12, that is what's going to be in the code, as it sits here, pages three through 16, that's what's going to get adopted, that whole, 16 pages is going to be codified, that is what's going to become Article 12.
Okay, just one minute here, sorry, I just want to make sure I didn't, all right, so the one thing I was, I mean, I'm okay if this gets adopted in the way it is, but maybe at some point it gets looked at, for instance, if you go on page eight of 15, letter G, size of plant material, like, some of that, I don't know if that ne, if that needs to be updated, just because of things have changed in the way we're addressing water and plant material and what have you, that was in the old existing Article 12, we never touched that, it got re-adopted, so that's what I'm saying, I'm okay if we leave those things in, but I think at some point they need to just be looked at. Let me just see if there was anything else, real quick, oh, here's another thing that wasn't in here too, that, and this is in regards to street trees, there should be like a reference to the Community Forest Management Plan that isn't in there.
Again, this is doc, this is adopting the state's Model Water-Efficient Landscape Ordin, verbatim.
No, this is a mix, some of this is a mix of the state one and our Article 12 from the city of Ojai.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how it got to be that way, because the way that-
That's what it is.
The way that we, that, the way that this is supposed to be presented is the changes to our Article 12 are the changes that are mandated by the state, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I mean, I'm fine, however you want to add the things in, but this is how it was done the last time, when-
Right, and at that time, we actually, the, our subcommittee presented and said, here's where we're at, we didn't get into changing what was in the existing Article 12, and it's still here.
I don't know, I can't answer that question, because when I was here, I didn't work on the last landscape, because I was tasked to work with you, and then subs, then somehow or another, the city attorney, Mr. Fletcher, he said, no, that's not how it's going to get done, I'm going to do it.
That's what happened, exactly.
And he took it forward.
Yeah.
So my impression ever, what went on was that he took what your recommendations were, and he put it in with the state, and what you conflicted with the state, he left it out, that was how I understood it, but I, I wasn't part of that process.
Right.
So I can't tell you, but if there's things that you want in here, we'd be happy to make a recommendation to City Council for them, I mean, you're, that's totally within your, you know, you can adopt this with the recommendation that this be added, but I don't have direction for what was to be changed, my direction was to codify the Modified Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance as mandated by the state of California into our code.
Okay.
Now, if there's something that's in conflict, in conflict that you think with the general plan or something, then I'm, I think we do need to look at it, but I'm really confused as to what, what you're saying is, 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 is not right, because this was looked at by staff numerous times, and this is consistent with the state guidelines.
Right, so everything with the Modified Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance, I'm completely in agree with, in agreement with, and you had, you just said something earlier, and I will agree with you, when the subcommittee was done, we said, we went through all the state information, we agree, but the part that we didn't get to, and the part that we didn't agree with, was our existing Article 12, so not the new stuff that was added in, but the existing, there was some, we found some conflicts, and then you're right, the city attorney was made aware of that, but they went ahead and adopted it anyway, so some of it's still here. I think my question would be, and maybe, and you could advise me, is it best to just adopt it the way it is, and then come back, and then amend it where I think some things should be added or changed, not with the state portion of it, but what was existing with the city of Ojai Article 12 landscape standards?
I don't really know how to advise that, because my understanding was, when it was taken back for the last time, he thought what you were recommending, this was my impression was, was in conflict, so he didn't, his professional opinion was, it should not be adopted that way, so I don't know.
Right, okay.
I mean, I, without specifically seeing what you're asking to have put in there, I would go ahead and push this forward to, to the City Council with the recommendation that they give you the direction to staff, if, if the commission so chooses, to look at, I mean, we're going back quite a ways now, because that, that's going to be before 2012 or 2010, you know, to add back in whatever is missing, I, I don't know what that would be, I don't really know.
What about, what about your other idea of just incorporating it into subsequent, the water-wise standards, and we have a, this is a public hearing, and I have a question from-
Yeah, sure, I would say that, that's fine, it sounds like what Commissioner Nolan is saying are not water-wise issues, there are some issues-
Yeah, some of them aren't, I mean, some of them is like, the Community Forest Management Plan should be referenced under Street Trees, like, for guidance, which is, you know, an adopted ordinance, and it's not, so, and then there's a couple other-
So what section is that, can we just look at that right now, I mean, is this something that-
Yeah, hold on, let me, I just, flip the page, okay, so on-
Under Street Trees?
Page, Attachment B, page 12 of 15, where it says, "Street Trees," you know, it says, "All new construction, the director may require the planning of Parkway Street Trees," da-da-da-da, and I know, and it says, "The city's master tree list," well, since that, this was written years ago, it's now the Community Forest Management Plan. I mean, I'm, that's just a technical thing, but I know, don't we want to be up to date and-
No, I think, I-
Yeah, it's, so that's-
Words are, words are important, that's the way it goes, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, it should be that, because I know when a project does come up, and, you know, we're reviewing it, it will refer to the, the Community Forest Management Plan.
Then I would just, I would, then my recommendation would be, if it's, if there are issues with Street Trees, because right now, we have, we're looking at this, the tree ordinance even then, you know, and that, maybe we should go ahead and push this forward the way it is, with the request that the council provide, allow you to come back and work on the certain sections that you feel need to be-
That'd be perfect, be fine.
And that are outside the wa, the, the Wello, the Mwellow issues, because then, then this will be in place, and what you're doing will have to be consistent with what's in place in here.
Exactly, and I don't want to hold it up either, and I completely get that, and I, and basically, I mean, generally, I'm in agreement, there's just some things that are just outdated, is basically where, and there's a couple things in here that were from the 2010 that no longer apply to the 2015.
I, I think with Street Trees, they should really be referenced to the Public Works Director, you know, I, I really have-
Or could it be that?
I really don't, the community development doesn't have much to do with trees in the public right away.
Maybe that's a better way of doing it.
Unless, you know, I mean, there are some changes that probably need to be in here, and I would, that's how I would do it, because I don't think it's, I think it's of a volume, or appears to be of a volume, that we probably couldn't do tonight.
Okay, yeah, and I'm okay with that, I completely get it, and, but I just, I did want to bring it up again, because we kept going over this, for the first time it was adopted, and then, the next thing I know, they told me they adopted it, and I said, psh, well, you didn't listen to us about the, the Article 12, but that's okay, I'm good with that, and I don't want to hold it up.
Let's just do that, if you know the specific sections you'd like to work on, then I would just make the recommendation with those specifics, so that we, they know that you're not opening the whole ordinance back up, and-
Right, so nothing to do with the state.
Okay.
Except for that one comment that I made about the, if the soil report says that there's-
Well, you can make that in the motion.
I can make that in the motion.
Yes, mm.
Okay.
Commissioner Quillisi?
Thank you, Chair, I wanted to compliment you on the Attachment B, because it makes it so easy to see what's added and taken out, it's the only way that I know of, to really be able to see what the text of the, of the code should look like, or is proposed to look like, but I wanted to ask one general question, my understanding from the discussion here is that there were, there was a set of state requirements that was adopted as, as written by the council a year or so ago, and now this, this Attachment B here is a result of taking those state requirements, and where they conflicted with what was in 10-2.12, they were substituted for the requirements that were there before. Is there anything in these puts and takes in Attachment B that did not come about by that process, that is, okay, that's great.
There should not be anything, staff did not make any recommendations to have above and beyond anything changed beyond the Model Water Landscape Ordinance, no.
Okay, because I, I started reading chapter 2.7 of Title 23, and I fell asleep before I got to the end of it, so I wasn't sure what you had, exactly what you had done here, but it sounds like that's exactly what we need.
Right, that's, that was, and I, you know, we, we weren't making, yes, we didn't, we weren't heavy-handed with it.
Any other Commissioner comments, Commissioner Corbin?
I just wanted to clarify, I just wanted to clarify what, say, the most minimal impact on a landscape for a small project might be that would require all of this, so it's 500 square feet, which is not a whole lot, so does that mean plant material has to be taken out?
You should address your comments to Director Wald.
Well, I think, I think that it's like Commissioner Nolan was saying previously, that a lot of this stuff is items that were required before that a professional landscaper would do, I think that now you're, the, the threshold has just been dropped, so, you know, you're going to find more landscape proposals being done by a professional versus being done by, you know, maybe a homeowner, wouldn't, wouldn't you agree, Kathleen, that's what's going to happen?
Yeah, only if, if they're required to do the submittal.
Right, that's what she's asking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so if you come in and you're doing, and you're doing a, let's say, the house we did just previous before this, he's, he's, didn't, he didn't get, he didn't request to have modifications to his landscape, he didn't get approval for, for modifications to a landscape, but if he had requested, and it was over 500 square feet, he would be complying with it, um, yes, I think, believe so.
Rules would apply.
The rules would apply, or was it, or he might trigger the 2,500, I'm not really sure, because I think 500 is new, new construction projects, real, so, so, maybe a new home, maybe the 2007 Grand Avenue where we did a brand-new home, and he had his, his landscape plan, then he would, he's, he's doing the same thing.
It's 2,500 square feet of landscape.
Yeah, and it's, and it's this, and this one, it says, "New construction projects with an aggregate landscape area equal to or greater than 500 square feet requiring a building permit or a landscape permit," so you built a, so the, he got permission, and he had to do a landscape plan as part of his new home, he needed to have, meet this requirement, and, because he's 500 square feet of landscaping, that was a completely vacant lot, so all his landscape's new.
So he had to do a landscape, he couldn't just leave it that way?
No, he can't just leave it that way, no.
And if there was an old landscape there, could he have left it that way?
Well, that's what these folks are doing here with the remodel, they're not, they're just leaving their landscaping, they're not touching it, I think the, the rub comes when somebody thinks that they didn't need to get a permit to change their landscaping, and they're thinking they can go ahead and do it without approvals, that's going to be the difficulty in educating people, because most people don't understand that the landscaping actually is connected to their approvals, you know, so if they, so it's very, we run in-
So five years after they do their addition, if they want to change a bed in the backyard, they have to go through this?
No, um, I, I wouldn't say five years down the road, but we have seen people not do, not get approvals for any landscaping, and do extensive landscaping, like extensive, like acres of it, install water, install trees, and, because they're just thinking they can go do it, that's, there's, there's a lack of education on that, landscaping is now regulated through the state and through cities, that's, that's not something people think, it's just, it's just an educational issue, it's like installing a fence, you know?
So if you have an addition, and you have an air conditioner unit, and you put three succulents in front of it, do you have to go through this?
No.
No, because it's too small, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right, it's going to be something-
I just want to make sure I understand this.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it ob, obviously is going to, we're going to have to, just like we do with the tree permits, since I've been here, we have to continually ask people, are you doing work under the tree, and people will tell us, no, and then we have to go out and explore, well, we see a tree, and what are you doing, you can't stage, you know, we have, it's constant that we have to educate them, well, I-
But it's not every tree, isn't it, just certain trees?
No, it's not every tree, and, but, you know, generally speaking, you know, tree preservation isn't something that's in every community, it's very strongly regulated here in Ojai, so we have to watch it, but it's the same as the landscaping, this is all, before, when we did landscape review, it was more along the lines of quantity, not quality, like we would say, you know, the ten, first 10 feet needs to be landscaped, you need to have a tree for every five parking spaces, we need to have this, and this, and this, and this, you know, that's what we did as planners, what you came up with, as far as the palette, or how you planted, had water-efficient criteria to it, but it was more like medium, low, high, wasn't really specific to each zone and types that we're doing now, and so, you know, that's what, that's more along the lines of what most people are familiar with, you know, the one tree for every five parking spaces, the front 10 feet, you know, you can't cement in your whole front yard, you have to have a landscape, that, we usually pushed people to have more landscape, now we're pushing people to have water-efficient landscaping.
I think one other thing that's important to remember here is that in this 2,500 versus 500, the rule right now is 500, by, by what the City Council did a year ago.
Correct, yes.
It's just that the code hasn't said so, and what we're trying to do here is fix the wording of the code, so it's, so that it's consistent with what the City Council has done in compliance with state law.
So, just to wrap it all up, and kind of, so what Commissioner Nolan is saying is that, along with how each landscape planter functions under the state code, she would like to come back and actually look at the amounts that we're requiring on people's property, and maybe add other things in there that, you know, I mean, some cities have thresholds for how much hardscape you can have, and still have it called landscape, you know, maybe that's the, the issues that she's looking at, that then would reduce, you'd still have open space, but you wouldn't have every stitch of open space landscaped and using water, you would allow other things, and that's what I think she's asking to look at.
Excuse me, a couple of the charts in here that were from the old days, so to speak, and I think they're just a little outdated and need to be modified and looked at differently.
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
So great to have you. So great to have your institutional memory, Commissioner Nolan. Commissioner Powers?
I too want to acknowledge staff, and it's apparent what it took to do this. I mean, just reading it was a lot, so putting it together, I can only imagine. And, and, you know, forgive me ahead of time, because this is this, these water, M Welo and the Waterwise Ordinance that we're going to be discussing, it's kind of new terrain for me, for sure. What I'm wanting to know is the distinction between M Welo and the Waterwise Ordinance that we're going to be discussing and recommending to council. Meaning, as I read through the M Welo and what you did in Article 12, I have a lot, a lot of notes, because honestly, I'm, I'm concerned because I don't think it goes far enough in terms of, and I've expressed this before. In terms of our bio-region, that we have an autonomous watershed right now, and there's other cities that have given further restrictions to what M Welo does that I felt could have been adopted for us, for our region. So what I, my question is, what's the distinction between M Welo and the Waterwise Ordinance? And what I'm seeing could be changes in what we're wanting to adopt tonight, can those go into the Waterwise Ordinance? And is that ordinance going to be suggestions to the public or rules that need to be complied with?
Well, I can't answer that question because, again, you know, what you're tasked with by the council, is there a councilman? Thank you.
I'd like to contribute on...
Yeah, I wish you would. And so, I, again, you know, ordinance is, you make, the planning commission's job is to make recommendations to city council. How city council, they're the decision-making body for ordinance changes in the City of Ojai. They're the ultimate decision-maker and body that will decide how the ordinance gets adopted, whether it is a carrot, you know, suggestions and encouragement, or whether it's, you know, strict rules, that would be up to them. You can make recommendations as you see fit. The Waterwise issues are going to be things that we see in the zoning code. Do you want to talk now? Should I shut up?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, I will.
That's all right.
No, it's fine with me.
Yeah, I, I think the, I can speak as an individual councilperson for the council based on past practices on one point, and that is, please, please, please bifurcate, trifurcate, whatever the issue is, keep goals separate. In other words, if our goal is to help the, the public understand the codification of what we're required to do by state law, keep that separate from the additions. Nothing wrong with the additions, all right? Just keep them separate. Because that enables us to deliberate intelligently. Whereas if it's mixed up, you kind of defeat us in terms of being able to consider, okay, this is state, this is codified, this is helping the citizens understand it. That's separate from all the other things that we know need to be done because of special conditions in Ojai. So no argument with that. Just, again, for the third time, please separate them, okay? Because it's quite easy to say, all right, this is state, it looks like it does, you know, conform to state law. Let's help our citizens by communicate. It's more like a communication technique than anything else in terms of getting it codified. These other issues, absolutely, and I, but just don't mix them up, okay? Now, as far as, that's my personal request, and I think reflects the practice. For example, we just went through with the Historic Preservation Commission term sheet on sites of merit and, and cleaning out the landmarking. We said, "Look, don't mix these up. These, you know, there's cleaning up the landmarking issues, and there's adding this whole other part about sites of merit." Don't mix them up. Separate them, so we can consider them separately. Now, and that's not a false dichotomy, it's just a way of, of aiding us in our deliberations. Because we ultimately have to take all this into effect. As far as Waterwise is concerned, I believe your Commissioner Nolan is going to give a report on the city council discussion, all of this, and I believe that I'll add one thing that's relevant to this discussion. February 1 was the deadline, I believe, we set for the Waterwise to get back to you guys, look at it, make suggestions on what we should pass in terms of text amendments to the ordinance. As an individual councilperson, and what I heard from the other councilpeople, we're being expansive and not limiting in what we want to, what we're hoping to hear from you. So if it includes text amendments beyond, over and beyond the state requirements in, in the landscaping aspects, absolutely. Now, I, I heard a little bit, maybe whether or not that was relevant or not. As far as I'm concerned, and when I heard from my councilpeople, from the DAs, when we were talking, absolutely expansively interpreted text amendment suggestions that would come out of the Waterwise Development that's due by February 1, pretty tight deadline, from the Planning Commission. And you want to make changes to the state requirements, please.
So are you, just in terms of meeting your request? So do you imagine that this would be adopted and therefore codified?
In terms of the state aspect?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, that's what we're doing tonight. No, I'm just saying, so that's what we do tonight. Is, is, go ahead and move this along.
At all to the exclusion of adding further text amendments to the state requirements.
But would you like to see that process?
Separate.
A separate process as part of when we review the Waterwise development standards.
I think that's a perfect vehicle for doing that, personally.
So I just, I just wanted to be clear. So when would you need the report from us before February, correct?
I think we put a deadline of February 1 on the report back from the Planning Commission.
Okay, and if we could do it sooner?
Referral from the Planning Commission by February 1.
Okay, because I will say that when I worked on this in 2010, although now it's...
We were trying to put, we've been...
We went through and came up with a whole list, so I'll go through it again.
And I think, I think there's a, I think there is a, I think we've clarified the role of staff and commissioners and council with respect to things like this. And for what, for example, what I heard about former City Attorney Fletcher, I'm not sure that practice would be continued today.
Right.
I don't think that that is how it would be done today. I think there might be a recommendation from the city attorney, but it wouldn't be a unilateral decision.
Right.
I, I think that's very clear.
So that, so thank you for that distinction. I needed that. It brings up a question for me regarding findings. So in our, in our discussion regarding Waterwise, if there's something we want to make an amendment to M Welo on, we have...
During the Waterwise discussion, it's been referred to you already, yes.
Not now.
Not now.
I think what his question is, what, we'll have to have a discussion about what constitutes findings for, for adopting.
Again, can I just briefly?
Please.
Okay, so remember, you're going to make a recommendation in a term sheet type outline format. We're not going to write the ordinance, it's going to go to them in a term sheet. Oh, it's on. And, you can't hear me? Oh, my God, I don't know what happened. Shocking. Okay, so we were going to go in a, in a term sheet. Their, council's going to make a decision on those term sheets, give you direction. Then it's fully flushed out in an ordinance. That's when you would have to say, you know, you're making the findings, you know, you're going to... But we're not going to go through that step until it goes up and they say, "Yes, we agree with that concept in general," correct?
Right. And so, yeah, just in terms of governing practices, you know, let's focus on the communication to the public by codifying state requirements. And then let's look at the things that need to be added for our special conditions as a, as a separate deliberation. That's all I'm asking.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Powers?
I'm gaining great clarity. Thank you. So this discussion we're going to have, that Councilman Wirick just mentioned, is going to be the entire Planning Commission. And that's, that discussion is distinct from anything that the Sustainable Committee is doing, because I don't even know what that's looking at.
In a way, there's some overlap, because we decided that we would concentrate on water as our first...
We might be able to bring some things to, to the Planning Commission at the time that that's on the agenda.
I think that's the best approach.
Yeah.
If we did it that way, then as a group...
You just, you just need to understand, the only caution I have is that it's a very tight timeframe. There's not time for it to sit in a committee. You know, if you guys have something you've already worked on, that's great, because that'll kind of give us a head start, keep the, the tires rolling. But I think it's something that, you know, I think that the community's looking for something right of way. I think council's looking for something right of way, and that means we're not going to do a committee and have us sit in a committee.
So my question would be...
And just real quick, it doesn't mean have to, February 1 is just what, we have to get the priority things. It doesn't mean that's the end of the work.
Correct.
No. So my question would be, if we're going to work on it as a commission, do we want to get that on the agenda? Anytime?
Oh, correct.
Soon, and then we'll have something, a target date, and then we'd be ready to go.
But again, I just, again, you know, we're going to work on concepts, right? You know, it's broad concepts that we're going to do, like we did with the second unit ordinance, all right? And so we're going to first start off with, you know, certain concepts, and then maybe drill down from there on them. But the idea is to not let it bog down, but as Councilman Wirick was saying, you know, get a succinct set of them and move them forward. And if you're struggling with something else, bring that up as the, the next set, so that we don't, we can actually be productive and not get bogged down like we have in the past somewhat. I think our, our deal with the second unit was maybe, would be a good example. You know, we want to move things forward and not, you know, take a year to do a program.
With that, I think I'll entertain a motion. While I can.
I'll make a motion to adopt PC Resolution forwarding a recommendation to the city council that they adopt the municipal code amendment relating to Article 12 landscaping standards, adopting a modified water-efficient landscape ordinance, M Welo, specific to Ojai.
I'll second that.
Real call.
Mark?
Yes.
Willsey?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Jigella?
Yes.
Sibilla?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes, and I will be back.
Powers?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, now we're going to move on to our first discussion item. Discuss the idea of reducing the commission from a seven-member to a commission, seven-member commission to five members. The only thing I have to say about this is if we had five members, we would never have a planning commission, because our members are always having to recuse themselves, and we really struggle to have a quorum. So I am in favor of leaving it the same, at seven. Commissioner Nolan?
I'm in complete agreement. Many of us, not all the time, but happen to be, this is a very small community. We happen to be on a project a couple of times, you know, more than one of us is on the same project, we have to recuse ourselves. And at the same time, I see the value in having seven, because we all bring something different to the table. And I find that invaluable in our discussions and, you know, our deliberations. So I'm in favor of keeping the seven.
Commissioner Quillisi?
I think keeping it at seven right now is fine, but I, I would take issue with a different portion of 10-1.01, and that is with regard to the requirements for a quorum. Right now, this says that four members constitute a quorum, and no more than three shall be non-residents of the city. So we could have a quorum that is three non-residents and one resident of the city making rules for the city. And I don't feel that's appropriate. I think whatever quorum we have should have a majority of city residents in that quorum. And mathematically, that means at most one member who is a non-resident.
That's probably true for the future planning commission, but I think this commission here, most of us are in the city, aren't we?
No.
Who is not?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm an outsider.
I know Kathy lives outside the city.
Do you live in the city? You don't live in the city?
No.
Okay, there's two out of five, uh, seven.
So we could have a quorum right now that's two residents and two non-residents.
Right.
That would even be acceptable, in my opinion. But three non-residents and one resident would not be acceptable, in my, in my opinion.
Comment. I hear what you're saying. But I also know that, all right, so for the last 50-plus years, the city council, you know, approved for the commissioners to have, you know, a maximum of three commissioners from outside of the city limit. And when, you know, we take on this role, we get sworn in that we're going to abide by the city ordinances, the codes, what have you. And basically, when I walk in here, I, and there's been a couple of projects where I had to say to myself, just for a second, I'm wearing my City of Ojai Planning Commissioner hat, and I'm just going to say, like, for the cell tower, for instance, and I had to look at everything and vote what was best for the city. At the same time, I knew they were looking to put it in the county. They could have put it in my neighborhood, but I had to separate myself. I'm hoping that, you know, professionally, we come in and we make that sworn oath that we're able to do that when we come here.
To act like a city resident when you're sitting here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, we pretty much swear that, you know, that's the approach that we're going to take when we're up here. Now, of course, yes, somebody may not do that, I mean, just like with anything else. But I just wanted to throw that in. I mean, I am, you know, I do live outside of the city limit, I'm in the sphere of influence, but I do put that hat on when I walk in here.
Yeah, I think it does, I, I understand the logic of it, and I've heard that.
It's the appearance that I'm more concerned about.
But I do think that we not only have an issue of people recusing themselves, but we, we had a hard time filling the two vacancies as well. And so that's, that's another layer to that problem. And I am concerned if we make a rule like that, though it makes, I can understand the logic of it on, on one level, that, again, we may be courting disaster. And I do think that it, the question presumes that people outside the city somehow have a, bring a different, a different set of guiding principles. And I presume that it is the case that anybody on here acts as Commissioner Nolan does, or they shouldn't be here. That's what I think.
I have a comment as well. Actually, a couple. One is, if I were to live, let's say, in Arbelada at the end of Palomar, I would not be in the city, though my neighbor would be. So the, the sphere of influence is right next door. The other comment is, is more personal to me, and that is, I feel anything that happens in this valley affects everyone. So borders and boundaries to me are man-made, they're important, they serve a purpose. But my concern for the residents of the valley that happen to live in city limits is, is important to me, just as the people that live down the road from me.
Commissioner Corbin?
In my experience, excuse me, I feel that, like Ray, that the majority of people who live in the unincorporated section of the valley do feel like they're residents of Ojai. And in many respects, they wish they had the rights of the residents of Ojai, because that is their concern.
Anybody else?
I haven't weighed in on this yet, but I'd like to say, I'm glad to see everybody's in favor of keeping seven people on the commission. I think it's really important. I think this idea of somehow making it more efficient by having five people is a really dangerous concept. This is a government body, it's not a business, and there's no reason for us to be efficient. What's important is that we have a variety of, not only opinions, but talent that people bring. And, and if you look at commissions over the years, there's a enormous wealth of talent outside the city limits that I think it would be really foolish to limit ourselves and say, "Oh, you know, we don't want that talent to be part of our thing." There's just, I mean, I'm just thinking of, like Steve Foster, for instance, was just on the commission. I mean, tremendous amount of work that he put in and tremendous input on the commission, and I think it would be really short-sighted to not include that. And, and I think it's really important to have seven members. I think this is a really important, it's one of the few places where people really interact with the city. I mean, people can come to city council meetings, but a lot of people, this is their first interaction with the city, and it's really good to have, to know that there is a wide variety of... with the city, and it's really good to have, to know that there is a wide variety of opinions, they're going to take their considerations very seriously and really look at it. And I just, the other thing that I've noticed over the years, it's a really unique opportunity for people to participate in the process of government. It's, it's a really fun, that's one of the fun things to me about being on the planning commission, is you're watching democracy in action. And I think there, again, it's a great opportunity for a whole lot of people to, and the more people we can have on the, you know, that have the opportunity to serve on the commission, I think the better will be off, better off will be, just in general, in the long run. So I'm really in favor of keeping it at seven.
Thank you, Commissioner Merk. Do we need to, we don't need to do, sort of, come up, we got the minutes, okay? Thank you. Then I think we'll conclude this discussion and move on to assigning a member of the planning commission to serve on the community to approve public art. And do we have any volunteers, Commissioner Merk?
I'd be glad to volunteer.
Yes. Awesome. That's the one thing I was sweating all night.
It's a really fun thing to do.
I was, I was hoping it was going to go that way. Thank you so much, we're indebted to you. Okay, so we will now move on to, yeah, we will move on to our informational items, our future agenda items.
So it looks like 601 Crestview is, is, is that still valid? 601 is the only one we have going, I believe, isn't it, Sherri? We looked at the board today, but I, it was a very busy day. Yeah. So we'll say, go ahead, what?
I thought you had another water-wise something on there, another discussion.
Oh, yeah, we'll put the water, we'll begin, we'll begin the discussion. We need to put it on the agenda, so that we can start talking about it. Then on November 16th, we'll have to bring before you the second unit ordinance, because as I tried to say, that there's some, some revisions that need to be done to the second unit ordinance.
Ojai Valley Inn.
Oh, that's right, the Ojai Valley Inn, on November 2nd. That's right.
And I'll have to recuse myself from that project.
Certainly.
Just upfront.
You just can't believe how busy it was today. I know we talked about it, but I can remember. Okay, so the second unit ordinance is going November 16th, it's going Tuesday night to city council, and there's not enough time between city council to have it on your November 2nd meeting. But again, it does need to be completed by the end of the year. The new bill, the new law that went into effect does not have a severability clause to it. You know, in other words, it's something, normally the law's written, it's something, if you're, if you're in conflict, it's only that section you're in conflict that then doesn't pertain. But in this case, if you're in conflict, the whole thing gets thrown out. And there's significant changes that the governor's done, one of which is minimum size is 1,200 square feet now, by right. So we just want to, one, give you a heads-up, it's coming, and two, tell you that it's imperative you move it forward. Again. So we'll just, with that, just go through the regular items that are down here, and we continue to work with the applicants to get them complete. You will see that the 402 North Blan Street came in, that was a concept review before you earlier in June, they've now officially submitted. We do have an application in for the Ojai Valley Inn, which is the, the entry into, doesn't have anything to do with intensity of the use, it's really remodeling what would be like their entry and their porter share, that type of thing, you know, coming in, the valet parking, it all has to do with the circulation right there when you go in. Nothing that is an increase in use or intensity of, or parking demand. And we do also have 1010 foothill, which came before you, also is a concept review, and they're back with their formal review. And again, we continue to work on some of the other ones, the 601 Pearl Street, their environmental review is wrapping up, and some general issues we have. So we have some fairly complex projects in for Ojai, and they're taking a little bit, a lot of studies and a lot of review, as you would expect us to do, and including the Mallory Way final track map, which will go ultimately to city council. And that has got some significant storm drain issues and et cetera, things that, new rules and regulations constantly coming down from the state on how you handle everything from second units to landscaping to stormwater, and it all makes it much more complex. So we'd just like to know that even though it looks like we don't have these little squares filled in, we still have a significant amount of work in the office.
I'm looking at this December 21st meeting, and that's probably going to be a problem for
Yes, I would think so.
More than one person.
I won't be here, for sure.
I may very well not as well. I mean, hm? December 21st. I mean, that is the Wednesday before.
I won't be here either, so.
Okay, so I'm thinking that's, that's a scratch.
You know, I'm getting to be a grandma again.
Oh, that's exciting. Congratulations. So are we scratching, rescheduling?
I would probably recommend that you take a vote to cancel it.
Cancel?
I, yes, I make a motion that we cancel that meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call. I, okay, all in favor, I, all opposed, no, okay.
Now, so that just means that we need to, I will try to come back with a schedule for us with these mandatory things that we need to accomplish. One, the second unit by beginning of the year. Two, the, the waterways issues back in February. Council's also given staff issues with the HPC, which, guess what, that's me too. So, so I'll just make sure that they're all working, sort of do like a Gantt chart for you, so you kind of know what needs to be done and what milestones you need to hit. Again, I think the waterways is something that, you know, the community is looking for us to do too, so we want to make sure of that. And so we will be agendizing it for November 2nd. We'll probably start off with a work party type, you know, setting, so we can have brainstorming, if that's fine with the chair.
Sure.
Okay.
Are there, are there any other issues where there is a state, a set of state mandated words that have to be
Oh.
Put into the code by text amendment? That seems to me, in conjunction with what Mayor Protem Wierich said, that should be our first priority.
Right. There's also, the city council's all looking, also looking at the sign ordinance that also was something that needs to be addressed. They will get, we will get direction from them, more than likely on Tuesday. That needs to come, again, because it's in the ordinance, it needs to come back to and through planning commission back up to city council. They also have limited meetings between now and the end of the year. I don't know that there's a specific time sensitive to that, sensitivity to it, other than making sure that we are compliant and not, not exposing ourselves to some kind of, you know, issue where somebody would be able to get a sign, we really don't want it there, because our sign ordinance section is deemed, you know, not legal to enforce. You understand where I'm going. So, so we do want to look at all those. There's, there's a number of them coming down.
You mentioned the lack of a severability clause in something that's coming back to us.
That's the second unit ordinance.
Second unit. Why shouldn't we add that as we pass it back up to the city council?
Because it's state mandated that it can't, you can't change the state rule.
And the state rule says, second unit rules have no severability?
No, it says that, here's city, what your ordinance has to have in it, and if you have something that conflicts with the way this state is written, your ordinance is out and ours is in.
So that's very much like this stuff that we just passed tonight, then. There are state words that we have to put in our code.
Well, it's even more restrictive than that.
It's worse than that.
Yeah.
By far.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It says that if you have a second unit ordinance, and there's a conflict with any provision of the state law that's mandated, that you have to have for state for second units, and if there's a conflict, yours is out.
Right.
In total. Whereas if you make yours compliant with the state law, then you don't risk some of those other things that you have in there that are not in conflict still remaining in place. So you can still...
I think, I think that's what we did tonight.
No.
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 Where there was a conflict, we substituted the state language.
Yes, but that, but you can have other things in, in our code with landscaping that, and if there was a conflict, it wouldn't throw all those out.
Which we have.
The difference is, in the landscaping, that it wouldn't throw out everything else. The difference is, the state law is extremely specific and onerous, and that one very important distinction, that if you are regulating second units, and any part of it is in conflict with the state law, it all goes out, even the part that's not in conflict with the state law. Unless you act before January 1.
So let's just say...
See the difference I'm trying to make?
Yes.
So one of, one of the things that's really important on the second unit ordinance is, it allows the city to, one, prohibit short-term rentals of second units. So it gives you rights that you can do, things you can regulate, things you can't regulate, or, or thresholds that you must meet. But we will have to throw out all those other things that we have in there if, you know, we're not compliant. So we want to make sure we're compliant, because I'm sure that city council's going to direct that there's certain things they want in that second unit ordinance.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
The STR issue is something that is not addressed by the state. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We're still allowed to, to regulate, but if we have in our, if we have a rule about, let's say, not advertising or something like we have for short-term rental, or if we have other aspects about short-term, about short-term rentals or second units, okay, that we want to keep, that we can keep if we're in compliance, all right? But if we're not, it's all out.
Sure.
And one example, for example, is size. You know, they're going to put in, like, like Director Wald mentioned, they have a mandate with respect to 1,200 square feet. We're not compliant with that now. Now you have, there are issues of parcel size in the state law, but we've got to be compliant with that, because they're saying that's ministerial, by right. And if you try to have something that's not compliant with state law, then the whole second unit ordinance is superseded by the state law template.
That's, that's a good example with the 1,200 square feet.
Ours is 640 right now, so we leave it alone.
Right.
Our entire second unit ordinance is out January 1.
I understand that. The, the issue, though, is that there are other restrictions in the code that could affect that. For example, lot coverage.
Yeah, like lot coverage. And the state, the state has a lot coverage provision. All we're saying is that...
And we just have to be compliant with the lot coverage.
We have to be compliant with the state's provision.
Provision, okay.
In order to keep the other stuff that we want to, that we want to have in, it's still in effect. Am I being clear?
Yep, yeah.
Yes, you're being very clear.
Okay.
We just want to, I, the only point in bringing it up is for you to understand the parameters, and you understand time sensitivity to it. We're canceling a, 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 a meeting here, so we want to make sure that everybody comes with their sleeves rolled up, and we can get this done and get it moved up.
Yep.
Because as we said, you have to pass it on. We're going to go November 16th, it's going to city council. Next Tuesday, we're going November 16th. It still has to go back up to them and get a second reading before the 1st. So this is not, this is not something that we can put to committee, or we can delay.
I don't think there's a council meeting after the 16th, still in November. Is that right? Or did you reschedule?
You're testing my memory, I'm sorry.
November, okay, so, so you changed the dates from November 8th, which is, you know, the election, to the November 15th.
Yeah, we're not going to have it on election 9.
And you changed the November 22nd to the November 29th, right?
Okay.
Wasn't that, you did it after?
So you do have a second November meeting.
Right, yeah, I thought we still had a second November meeting, right after Thanksgiving.
Right, you changed, you kept both of them and put them, because there's a fifth week in that November.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and we were very cognizant of...
A lot of work to get done.
A lot of work.
Otherwise, we'd be pushed into November 2nd for that, to give you time to go through.
And it's, it's quite interesting. We're not the only agency or, or, or government faced with this. There's another provision in the state law that the Ojai Valley Sanitary District is trying to digest.
Uh-huh, yes, certainly.
It says no capacity charges can be assessed on a second unit.
Yes, exactly.
I love that.
I'm actually looking forward to that discussion.
So I've already asked Mr. Palmer, so, you know, thoughts, Jeff, you know, on how you're going to handle that? And, and, you know, so there, and, and the governor just, the state just does this to us every once in a while. You know, it's just, oh, you know, here's the hammer, we're going to hit your head with it, and oh, by the way, you know, you don't have much time to respond.
Right.
It's just, the state does this.
Maybe they were listening when we were having that conversation about that second charge being impediment, huh?
Well, yeah, the article that just came out on that was fantastic, because I do think that's just an outrageous impediment. It's unnecessary, and it really needs to be dealt with. And I'm so glad that the state came down on it, because it gives us now opening for a conversation. I think that's a huge impediment.
Do you think the council would consider extending the period for the second unit compliance program in light of this reduction in fees by the state?
I mean, quite.
I think there are probably still some people out there...
As an individual council person, which is all I can say.
Sure.
As an individual council person, I would be receptive to the argument, yes.
Yes, okay.
All right, and moving on to the planning commission liaison schedule for 2016, moving on.
Um, I am, I am switching with Commissioner Quilisi for his meeting at the MAC meeting.
I just want to point out the dates in here are wrong. As we were just discussing, city council, it's not November 8th and 22nd, it's the 15th and the 29th. Those have all been moved one week.
So Commissioner Quilisi goes November 15th to city council, and I go the 29th. Is that right?
Correct.
That's what you're saying, okay.
So you're switching?
Okay. No, 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 we're not switching that. Commissioner Quilisi and I are just clarifying our attendance at the city council meetings in November. But then I'm switching with Commissioner Quilisi, I'm taking, he attempted to go to the October 17th meeting on my behalf on the, to the MAC meeting, so I'm now going to take his next rotation, which is April 17th.
It's all right, I didn't wind up doing anything.
Okay, we'll leave it the way it is, then. It works for me. Okay, so, yes, yes, Commissioner Corbin?
I see that I'm on November 21st for an MAC meeting, and I can't go anywhere that week. It's Thanksgiving week, it's hell week for me.
This, this is a meeting in Oakview.
Yes, I know, but I can't, I can't do anything that week, other than make desserts.
Okay. Well, I can, why don't...
I'm expecting her to do that.
Why don't, I'll take your meeting then, Commissioner Corbin.
Just move them all down, so they stand out.
Just move them all down, yes. Genius, Sherri.
Thanks.
So then you're going to do it December 19.
And the next Building Appeals Board is being scheduled as we speak, so that should be coming out, it says pending, but it should, that date should be coming out soon.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you, what?
The Building Appeals Board meeting, the next one, it says pending, those are being scheduled now. There's emails going back and forth in our department, so, you know, they should know when that's coming. Why, you're not in the email chain? Oh, yeah, they're scheduling it. So we should know within, like, the end of the week, when that next meeting's coming, and we'll let, Commissioner Merk, now.
Okay. We got it good on that? Okay. So now we will go to our reports, and Commissioner Nolan, would you like to enlighten us on the October 11th city council meeting?
I was not able to attend that evening, and I started to watch it, and I haven't finished it, so I don't have a report, and I apologize. I was also intending, and I did write my report for Complete Streets, just not regarding the master plan, but just an update about what we've been doing. Because I was there, I did contact the city manager's office and asked him for advice on how to proceed with that, and I'm just waiting to hear back from him. So I'd be happy to give a report at the next meeting, but I don't have one for this evening.
Okay, no problem. Commissioner Merk, you're going to be Building Appeals Board next meeting, it sounds like. The MAC meeting, this, this was an unsuccessful handoff, but we fortunately, Councilmember Wierich attended evidently a very long meeting, so...
Yes, you managed to miss the longest MAC meeting ever, which started at 7:00. I have no idea why you were, you were informed it was 6:00, but it...
The building manager also thought it was at 6:00.
I understand. I have no explanation. However, it did start at 7:00, and it was a fairly consequential meeting, because it included three items. One, the Camp Ramon retreat modification to their permit, involving some landscaping and some mitigation and some other issues. And second was a 64-bed assisted carrie unit on El Roblar on Miners Oaks. And second was a 64-bed assisted carry unit on El Roblar on Miners Oaks. And third was a 30-year modification, extension of the conditional use permit for trucks coming out of the quarry. So we started at 7:00 and ended at midnight. Very interesting. Let me go through them really quickly because I think it's really relevant, because county planning was kind of on the hot seat for three different reasons on these three different issues. Number one, Camp Ramah. Lot of residents complaining about the fact that a stipulation on their existing conditional use permit is there supposed to be a 24-hour complaint response phone number for people to call about noise or issues. I mean, they're even talking about police reports of gunshots and fireworks and all kinds of things, and it's not working. So we have, this is a, we've seen this before in county planning hearings where entitlement stipulations are very clear, have simply slipped and not been followed, and the residents, multiple residents got up and said, "County, we've called, we've complained, and you've done nothing." And I've heard this before. This is inside our sphere of influence, and the residents along Foothill were quite upset with the fact, they felt they got no enforcement backup from the county on a stipulation in the conditional use permit as it stands, so what are you doing? You know, so there was a lot of talk about all of that and how to deal with that. So that was item number one, Camp Ramah. And the other interesting thing about it, just commenting for Commissioner Wald's benefit, is that they're looking at two renewals, two modifications to the conditional use permit, one on one parcel and one on the other. The issue came up, well, why are you piecemealing these? How do we know the difference between, they agreed that the operations were going on on both parcels and people going back and forth, and yet they were piecemealing the conditional use permit changes. So that was another interesting issue. So that was item number one, I won't go too long, but I thought you might find that of interest. Number two, the 64-bed assisted carry unit. Lot of questions about water. The interesting thing was that if, despite the resolution prohibiting any new or expanded connections by the Miners Oaks District, they say they have will serve letters, and basically underwritten by Casitas as the sole supplier of water to the Miners Oaks District. One of the people from Miners Oaks came to the special meeting they had this morning of the Casitas Municipal Water District on the state water project and other issues. That's a whole other interesting report that I could give, but I won't bore you, it was, you know, cast of characters. Nevertheless, Casitas seemed to have no idea what they were talking about. So county planning had, in this 64-bed assisted packet that they were asking the municipal advisory council to look at, said, "Oh, yes, there's will serve levers," and we stood up and said, "Well, where are they in the packet?" "Oh, we didn't want to burden the sides of the packet with those." So they couldn't answer the questions and they were missed, and they didn't have the document. They referenced a traffic study that was not in the packet. They referenced a stormwater retention plan that was not in the packet. And so county planning was sort of looked at and goes, "Really? You know, why are you asking us to deliberate on this when you don't include all the documents that are referred to in the application package that's before us?" So that was kind of interesting. But the applicant got up and mentioned that they were looking at a net zero approach, and the way they were achieving net zero was by going through the entire watershed with schools that are in the entire watershed and paying for sufficient change-out of urinals and toilets in the school systems to offset their planned increase of water use to get to net zero. So that was, I thought, an interesting thing I would comment on in terms of your thoughts and deliberations on net zero, because then we got into a discussion of, should the net zero be defined just on the aquifer that serves Miners Oaks, or should it include the entire watershed? Because obviously there's schools that are in, outside of the Miners Oaks aquifer, which is going to be, I think, a net zero question for you to think about. In other words, when we get into net zero, do we want to define the valley as a whole? In terms of mitigation and offsets and definition of net zero, do we want to stay within the city limits, or do we, and what is the best approach for doing that? I'm raising the issue for you to think about. It came up in the 64-bed assisted carry unit. Then there were, you know, so there were issues, there was one other interesting comment, the Miners Oaks people that were on the municipal advisory council, they said, you know, they had the whole design, which basically looks like the hospital. And they made the comment, of course, they're just recommending, not an approval body, but some of them from Miners Oaks made the comment, "You know what, that just really looks like Ojai, and we don't really want to look like Ojai." Because it looks like the hospital. And they go, and they had, you know, "We're kind of ramshackle and rundown, and we like that. And we don't want to look all pretty and Mediterranean. It looks like the inn or the hospital, and we don't like that. We want something that's, you know," I'm not sure they couldn't really express it, but I thought it was interesting, they very distinctly said, you know, aesthetically, we just don't want to look like Ojai. We don't want to look upscale like that, you know? So whatever that means. This is located very close to the intersection of 33 and Kiama and El Roblar, it's just, you know where all those old foundations are on the left?
Apartment building and shop.
Yeah, that's the lot.
Yeah.
Okay? For the 64-bed assisted carry unit. So it was an interesting discussion, and I have more details, but again, time is short. Third thing was the quarry. And, boy, that was an interesting one, too. Even Mr. Offerman was getting exasperated with the county planning staff because our city attorney and county council have a profound difference of opinion about certain aspects of what can be in conditional use permits and what cannot be. And here's an example. This came up before us, remember when they had the hearing before us on the Coinsting Road renewal? And they, county council was saying, "You cannot stipulate path of travel through the jurisdiction after you leave the property in a conditional use permit." In other words, you cannot, according to county council and county planning policy, you cannot stipulate that the trucks have to go a certain way to the main highway in a conditional use permit. Our city attorney kind of just does exactly what Kathleen Wald just did. Say what? And, yeah, never heard, you know, in other words, the existing conditional use permit says you have to use 33 for the quarry trucks. Can't go anywhere else. Have to go 33, you know, to the interstate, have to, it can only go, you know, use 33, period. That's it, can't go any other way. And so county planning's going, "Well, you know, we don't think it's, we can continue that stipulation." And myself and others were going, "I just want to report that our city attorney disagrees profoundly with your county council on this." And that further got into an issue where they're under a consent decree right now with channel keepers with respect to certain mitigations like silting ponds and things like that in order to protect the endangered species habitat. That expires within the 30-year timeframe of the modification, and the people in the MAC were saying, "Well, why don't we just include the stipulations in the consent decree in the conditional use permit?" Saying hiring a third party to certify the silting pond has been cleaned out, and that's included in the conditional use permit. And county planning, after starting to say, "Well, we can't do that," finally admitted that's against their policy. And even Steve Offerman was going, "It's what? Why is that against your policy?" So county planning made our planning department look pretty good.
It's a pretty low bar.
Oh, no. But there was, so those were three big issues, you know? The water-wise issue, the incomplete packets, the issue of the scope of what can be included in conditional use permit stipulations, you know, we're talking about a 30-year extension. And then the issue of Camp Ramah, where people are saying, "Why isn't county? How can we trust county, you know, on a CUP renewal or a modification when, you know, you have a track record of constantly asking you to enforce the existing stipulations and you simply don't?" So, you know, all of that was pretty interesting, and that took five hours to go through everybody's back and forth. So I tried to summarize a lot of deliberation in a very short way, but I saw those as three major issues that came up in terms of how county planning is handling their applications. And one final comment is that we are, several of us on the council, and Steve McClary is really helping with this, we are insisting that they follow the guidelines for orderly development in the sphere of influence and in the Ojai area of interest. And that means they are supposed to have, they're given opportunity, they are required to, in the area of interest, they are required to respond to the city's comments on any discretionary applications within the area of interest. And we're, that's kind of not been necessarily adhered to, and we're trying to insist on it. And the second thing is that inside the sphere of influence, they've testified and the guidelines talk about consistency with city policies. What does that exactly mean, consistency? And if I could just shade over into my liaison report, then I'll be done.
Can I just want to ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Where are they, where are they at with their revision or their, the work in progress to redo their own general plan as it relates to the Ojai Valley area plan?
Yes. And again, the issue of how you use the word consistency. There have been some comments by staff people that are very troublesome with county planning, where they talk about wanting the area plans within the county to be consistent with one another. That is a completely, in my opinion, misapplication of the appropriate word consistency, because what that means, it sounds so benign, what that means is we lose the critical elements of the Ojai area plan that are controlling growth and preventing sprawl. And the city, I think personally, as an individually city council person, is going to have to get aggressive in standing up for the rights within the Ojai area of interest with respect to the Ojai area plan. Who else, if not us? Who else is going to be able to focus on that advocacy? We got an issue of having to be extremely vigilant in terms of what's going on with the update to the Ventura County general plan and the Ojai area plan. There are the same kind of battles that are going on between Measure C and Measure F are also going on in terms of different ways of looking at how you update the various area plans. I'll never forget when we were, they were testifying before us on the Coinsting thing. If you recall, I asked the question of the Air Pollution Control District Executive. I said, I asked him after I listened very carefully what he was saying about mitigation. And I said, "So your model of mitigation treats Ventura County as a flat, featureless plain." And he went, "Yeah." In other words, we could have a polluting source, from an Air Pollution Control District's point of view, at a polluting source in the Ojai Valley that's mitigated by something in Simi Valley. And they would accept that, but the Ojai area plan does not. So that's, you know, the issue of just saying, "Oh, well, just let, you know, these outside, these other agencies," county planning seems to like that, to say, "Oh, whatever the other agency says is okay." There's a perfect example of where it's not okay.
Well, we're allowed to be more restrictive than state law for purposes of topography, geography, and local environment. How could the county not let us do that?
Let me say, yes, we can, the county can in terms of the Ojai area plan, and we can inside the city limits, yes. There can be a specific. But if we let that basis for that differential slide in terms of, if the county updates their general plan and we don't keep those stipulations we need to have in our Ojai area plan that we have now, then it reverts to an agency like AQMD.
Are those meetings scheduled out already? Are they discreet meetings?
Yeah, yeah.
They're all scheduled out and independent?
Right. And we believe as many of us are watching things very carefully, but please, sign up. Sign up on the county planning website, and you can get on the notification list for anything to do with updates to the general plan. It's definitely an issue for us.
Sure.
Because it's, the city can only do so much. The Ojai area plan applies to the valley, to the area of interest, and that's where the definition needs to be. And, yeah.
So is that on the county website?
Yes. County, the Ventura County Planning, Ventura County Board of Supervisors website.
Okay.
Click on county planning, you get to the general plan update, and you can sign up for notifications.
Okay, great, thank you.
You know.
Thank you for going to that MAC meeting, too. That's really great that you were there.
That was interesting.
Good advocate.
As my, you know-
Took one for the team.
So, anyway, just for all the other comments, I'm going to just wind up my liaison report, too. I know you have other reports, but on Commissioner Corbin's comment about people that want to be in the city? Just from the standpoint of the rules, the sphere of influence is a LAFCO designation that, among other things, sort of defines a pre-approved areas for annexation. And if areas within the sphere of influence want to be annexed, it's much easier and almost sort of, is pre-approved or right, kind of, it's sort of pre-qualified for annexation inside the sphere of influence, I believe.
Yeah, it usually means that your overarching documents, like your general plan and that kind of thing-
It's consistent with everything, there's no-
Right.
And so what it comes down to, let's say that, and this has come up with the arbolata lately, because people are literally looking across the street at the county refusing to enforce, in my opinion, their residential zoning ordinance with respect to short-term rentals. So you have people across the street looking at each other, where on one side of Polamar, the county's not enforcing anything with respect to short-term rentals except for special units for parties and things. On the other hand, we have a ban. And they're looking at each other, one side of the street from the other. And they won't respond to the consistency issue. The county simply won't. They're thinking about it, but they won't yet. And they're not applying the allowed use principles of the zoning code with respect to short-term rentals. So the only option, if the county ends up refusing, and you want, and people in the arbolata want to have the same kind of rules as the city's doing, not much option except annexation. I'm just, I'm stating that as a fact, not as an advocacy. But there is a distinction between the path to having the city's rules apply within the sphere of influence that is more difficult outside the sphere of influence, and the arbolata is completely within the sphere of influence. I'm just stating these as facts, okay? Just for food for thought, you know? So, anyway, I did go on the state water project tour, inspection tour. I got an education about big water, and a lot of issues. The Councilman Randy Haney and myself went, along with Angelo Spendero, and we learned a lot, a lot of food for thought. And then this morning, there was a multi-hour meeting with the Casitas Municipal Water District Special Water Resources or Executive Committee meeting where we had probably 30 people go to a special meeting on briefing about the state water project tour. And that was also very interesting. The, you know, we can't even, I can't even begin to touch the surface of it, but I can say that we do believe two things have happened with the Casitas Municipal Water District. One is they understand they've got to do a better job with publicly communicating what's going on and what they intend to be doing. They're taking that seriously. They might even get mics, so you could hear them when the air conditioner's running. And next, they've agreed to do the sediment study, so if we find out exactly what's in the lake, really that we can use. And number three, they're right there in terms of saying, "Yes, we've got to do, among other things, along with everything else, we need to back up a connection to the state water project." And I think we're getting there. And many of us, it's going to be coming up for the city of Ventura, approval of the contract with Ventura Water with the design consultant soon. We're in contact with Ventura Water about this. Bottom line, if you saw the presentation to the city council, some things kind of get very simple when you reduce them to its minimum. You got 30-inch pipe on one side and a 30-inch pipe on the other side, why on earth wouldn't you put a 30-inch pipe in the middle? wouldn't you put a 30-inch pipe in the middle? Please, the burden of proof would be to show why not, in my opinion. I think we're getting involved in the public policy process with that framework and that understanding. My last comment is that the importance of plumbing is not just getting state water. Santa Barbara would be dead if they didn't have the state water project connection, because even when they couldn't get state water, they were able to buy water from other sources. Whether you like that or not, whether you think it's responsible to do that or not, the fact that they had a way of delivering water from outside the state water sources kept Santa Barbara alive. That's just a fact. You talk to the man, you know, you look at the facts, and that's the case. Finally, the plumbing means it opens up to the future. If we're going to be treating, I asked the state water people at Metropolitan, how close are we being able to define standards for effluent treatment that could be stored in lakes? Could be stored in aquifers? Are that close? City of Ventura, 8,000 to 10,000 acre feet a year being dumped in the ocean? Their whole model of wanting to go to sufficient treatment of all that effluent to the cleanliness level where it could be stored is based on having a place to store it. Where do you store it? The largest single underutilized storage capacity in Ventura County in total is the Ojai Valley, between our aquifers and our lake. Now, there's all kinds of issues with storage for other agencies. But let's say you have an agreement with Ventura that says, all right, you have to treat your water when it gets there, even if you don't need it right now because it's raining, but you can store it in the lake, and then you can draw it off when you need it, and we're saving 8,000 to 10,000 acre feet a year. That becomes something meaningful. The entire state water allocation, 100%, if there's enough rain for the City of Ventura from the state water project, is 10,000 acre feet a year. And so it opens up that, all right? The supervisor Bennett, his dream continues to be apparently desal. You still have to distribute it, and even if you do it, you need pipes. So this pipe is about a lot more than just getting state water. It's about a regional effort to achieve sustainability in West County. And whether we like it or not, we're part of the sustainability reality for West County. There's, we're, I don't know if there's any population level not connected to state water of our size anywhere in Southern California right now. And, you know, we like our independence, but the kind of independence we have right now may not be compatible with sustainability. Yes.
Having a connection to the state water program doesn't make us dependent on the state water program.
It's supplemental water. I know. I agree.
What does that pipe look like? Where would they?
30-inch pipe from the, right around Somas or just east of Somas, there's two 30-inch state water project pipes that come together in a little 24-inch spur. Callejas says they, it's seven and a half miles from the end of that 24-inch spur to the City of Ventura Water District Treatment Plant right on the river in Saticoy. And then there's connections from the City of Ventura Treatment Plant to the terminus of the 30-inch pipe from Casitas, which is somewhere in, God, I forget the street intersection, but it's somewhere in western City of Ventura. So the basic connection is seven and a half miles of 20 to 25 million. Callejas has indicated that if the 30-wench went in, they would put their, they would upgrade their 30-inch section.
Okay. So that gets it to the lake?
That gets us, that gives two things. One is if it allows state water to be, to fulfill, Casitas could deliver its 5,000 square feet of entitlement as much as available. This year was 60%. That could be delivered to the City of Ventura in lieu of their withdrawing water from the lake.
Because you can't put it in the lake.
Well, you could. Callejas wants to be able to store state water in the lake for emergency purposes.
But I thought you can't mix those two sources.
Yes, you can, if you work out an operating agreement.
Isn't it about treated water going into untreated water, and it being environmentally impossible?
According to Callejas, they're okay.
Okay.
All right? According to Callejas, they've changed their thinking. And yes, the water comes treated after Silmar, but their point of view is, we need storage. We've got to store water, because if we have an earthquake and the Simi Valley tunnel is broken, or we lose the delta for a while, and we got to, we got to have storage in Ventura County.
Okay. So they get it in the lake, then what happens? How does it get to Ojai?
Well, right now, the water from the lake is actually the, in the '60s, there was, believe it or not, in the '60s, when the lake was being put in, the predecessor to Golden State and the predecessor to Casitas were racing, competing to hook up people for customers. And so we have parallel pipes between Golden State and Casitas right now. We have some Casitas customers in the City of Ojai. And right now, Golden State is taking 30% of their distribution of water is coming from Casitas. So Casitas lake water is already supplying the City of Ojai.
That's right. Yeah.
The pipe interconnections are already there.
I just was reading how, whatever, in the 1800s, that there was an aqueduct that went from the mouth of the San Antonio Creek down to Ventura. That was, we were so water-rich.
Yeah, the mission did that.
The mission did that.
The mission had a, the mission had an aqueduct, the remnants of it are still there. Unfortunately, when the, you know, when we took over from the Spanish, we dismantled a lot of it for rock, for building. But there was a incredible, well-engineered aqueduct that was, went to the center of Ventura Mission. That was 1700s.
Was it that, was it that long ago?
Yeah, they built it as part of the mission.
Isn't that crazy?
In the 1780s, yeah. They, it was, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely fascinating. So as late as the 90s, and I don't want to, you know, I could go on for it, but in the 90s, it's a matter of record that Casitas was still begging the City of Ventura to buy more water from them. And the contract that they have now is based on that era, because the City of Ventura was going, we really don't need that much water anymore. And Casitas was, oh, please.
You know, somebody was.
Please buy our water.
Somebody was telling me the founding documents didn't provide for the sale of the water at all.
Yes.
That it was really only to be used as a backup.
Exactly. And the contract in the 90s, there's a letter from a Casitas, former Casitas manager saying, oh, please, what, let's figure out a way for you to buy more water from us, please. That was the 90s.
That's crazy.
And one of the provisions was they were not previously allowed to mix Casitas water with any other water for delivery outside the district in the City of Ventura. The new contract let them do that. Now, it's not, you know, it's not like the City of Ventura did something bad here, Casitas asked them to do it.
That's right.
So it's all quite fascinating, and it was quite fascinating to get reviewed, get briefed on the reasons that Metropolitan wants to do for the, you know, for the Delta Tunnel Project, two 40-foot tunnels, 35 miles long. And then, as I was telling Commissioner Quilisi, the first stop on the tour was at the Fish Barrier Dam that was, currently had about 4,500 cubic feet per second going over it. And a lot of us, we got off the bus, people in Ventura, we just sort of sit there like, wow, water. You know, we hadn't seen that much water flowing in, I don't know how long, you know, in California, but, and it was salmon and water and so on. But on the other hand, Oroborla Dam is 43%. Not that different from Casitas. You know, capacity of 2.7 trillion acre feet, and they're at 43%. And they serve, that reservoir serves basically 19 million, and a couple other smaller reservoirs, 19 million people in Southern California. So, big water.
Yeah.
It was very interesting.
Well, thank you for your.
So I could say, I could go on, but I'm, you know, thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
But I thought I'd just let you know about the MAC meeting. That was pretty interesting.
Very good. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Anything else? If not, we will adjourn.
Should I do the quick light streets?
Oh, I thought you said you weren't ready, going to do that.
No, that was for the.
Oh, just the city council? Okay.
I'll just do it real quick. Just take a second. So basically, what we've been doing is wrapping up the master plan that is on our agenda for an upcoming item. And the next step is for that to go to a graphic designer, just to clean up the graphics. And then I'm sure that Greg Grant will contact our community development director and get it on the agenda. And then something that we did in 2011 was, we actually, Complete Streets Subcommittee, went out and walked the streets, and we collected data. And that data was to be used for the policy and for the implementation plan, and we also shared it with Nelson Nygaard and with Sergeant Townhorn Planning for the neighborhood planning. But one of the exciting things was, we finally got it into a GIS format. One of our fellow members, who was a past planning commissioner, had an intern, so that information was entered. And we discovered that there was some missing data. So basically, that's what we've been doing the last couple of meetings, is kind of training the new group of Complete Streets members and going out on the street and doing that. We were at Ojai Day last Saturday, and we had a very successful day. We had some little forms for people to fill out, and I'd say generally, we had a really good response. And I guess that's it for now.
Thank you so much. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we're adjourned.